This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
It's call to order, tonight's school board meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Iverson, have we complied with Open's meetings law notification this evening?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Would you please verify quorum?
Commissioner Dux, here. Commissioner Hambach Boyle, here. Commissioner Luganville, here. Commissioner Spindler, here. Commissioner Vuul, here. Commissioner Jean, here. And Trish Cummins is absent.
Great, thank you. We have two individuals signed up for a public forum tonight, so we'll call them up. I think, James, you want Archie first? Okay, Archie Ecker, you can come up first. Just please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Archie Ecker. I live at 1405 Willow Lane here in Eau Claire. I wanted to say good evening to everyone. And I'm a dedicated math teacher at Memorial High School. I'm proud to work there and just had a pretty busy day there. It was a great Monday. My wife is a physical therapist at various schools through the district, elementary schools. She works part-time, three days per week, six-tenths FTE. When health premiums were fully covered, for many years she received no benefit as an employee because she was married to me. That came with the deal. Or had she not been married to me, she would have received a 60% benefit. But this resulted in a savings to the district for years and years. And as we teachers negotiated to pay a portion of health premium in time, that portion was waived as a benefit of her six-tenths employment. Changes were made recently to the employee handbook that affected my wife's insurance benefit for being a part-time physical therapist here for the Eau Claire School District. Kindly, this benefit, last season I spoke to you at about the same time. And kindly, this benefit was extended or grandfathered through this school year. This spring, I was made aware that this would end and that my wife, as a six-tenths physical therapist, would receive no health insurance benefit and that I would be picking up the portion of the premium that was previously covered by her, which amounts upwards of $2,700 for this year, and then so on each year and into the future. So what I'm asking you this evening is to, you know, please consider, as you have in the past, grandfathering this benefit, this health insurance coverage on her behalf, as in the past, into the future. And I thank you very much for giving me this venue to speak this.
Thank you very much, Archie. And next we have James Martin up. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is James Martin, and I live at 511 Summit Avenue here in Eau Claire. I have a real quick impromptu presentation that I threw together, hopefully to stay under the four-minute limit.
Okay.
Is that correct?
All right.
So I'm going to try and go fast.
Okay.
That's part of the visuals, to move it along.
Okay.
So I don't have to talk about everything in detail. So who am I? I'm a resident of this district and of this community for 25 years. And I've been paying taxes, property taxes, for my house and a small rental I have for over 18 years. I work for an employer who has been challenged, year in and year out, to try and get their revenue and the CPI to mix, to have the revenue exceed CPI. And many years, my employer has lost out on this. My employer goes through budget cuts regularly. And the administration and the staff spend countless hours trying to figure out how they're going to make do with less and still produce an excellent product. They don't know their funding from year to year because they get biennial funding from the state. And they have to borrow millions in order to operate. And they pay interest on that just to pay it back when they finally get their payments. This is an example of the funding that they've received. This was shared with you by your business finance director back in September. That final column I added, that final column there in red, is every year that this district, my employer, received less than the CPI. Thirteen years of history there, in five of them, they had to move forward with less than the CPI, than the very cost of living. Why is that? Because the state controls 92%, of their budget. They only have a very small local control. Is there a solution? Tonight, you talked about a strategic plan earlier than this. You also have some conversations about referendum coming up tonight. Maybe it's a three-to-five-years operational referendum. Maybe you take all your deferred costs that you haven't been able to afford and put them into a 30-year bond, and amortories out common sense maintenance costs. Maybe you do what La Crosse has done. La Crosse was able to, when we locked in the funding in 1993, they had a higher ratio or a higher percentage locked in than Eau Claire did. They end up, on a per pupil basis, when multiplied out for Eau Claire's per pupil numbers of enrollment, they have 23 million, the equivalent of $23 million more in funding than Eau Claire, a mere 80-some miles away, western Wisconsin, two very similar communities. Not only did they have 23 million, the equivalent of $23 million more per year since 1990, or approximately since 1993, they also went, their residents went and passed an additional five-year referendum in 2004 for 3.5 million. And then another five-year referendum for 4.1. And then another five-year referendum for 4.1. Their community said, even though we have more than most, we need even more to do what we need to do for these students and for these teachers and for these facilities and for this educational program that we're going to support. So I ask that you have a plan. I ask that you have a vision. I ask that you be proactive. I ask that you think long-term. I ask that you consider efficient use of taxpayer dollars instead of borrowing just to pay back. I ask that you consider my daughter in sixth grade, who has six years left in this district. I ask that you consider my other daughter, who's in fourth grade and has eight years left in this district. I ask that you think of my other daughter, who's in first grade and has 11 years left in this educational system. And I ask that you think of my son, who's two, in diapers, who has coming 18 years, no, 16 years left in this district. We're here. I'm here. I'm dedicated. I'm part of the fabric of this district. I'm part of the community of this district. This is my family. We're here, and we're looking for an education from this district. I ask that you consider supporting an education of the next generation of student, the next four-year-old that in this coming year enrolls in this district. I ask that you make a commitment to the class of 2030, because that's when they will graduate, when that four-year-old leaves. I ask that you consider a 14-year operational referendum, that you take seven years of gradual increases on the property tax levy to bring us up to par with La Crosse, and then seven years of a commitment at that funding level to the class of 2030. We use that money for what? We'll use it for fund balance. We'll put more money away so we can stop borrowing to meet our payroll. We'll take money and we'll put it toward competitive recruitments and retaining the very best staff. And we will invest in long-term programming and long-term curricular adoptions so that we aren't every other year wondering what we have to cut, what can't we offer, what is it that we're not going to do. We invest in our buildings and grounds for safe, efficient, and well-maintained facilities that we're not trying to scrape by. We invest in the future of the next child. And you do that by looking long-term and not having to go back again and again and figure out what are we not going to offer so that my child has the same opportunities that that child, that four-year-old child in La Crosse has that's going to enroll next fall. And they have it for their entire time with our district. That's what I ask that you consider when you start having those referendum conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Excellent. And that's it on our public comments. Thank you again. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. Tomorrow, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the Administration Building, there's a Charter Choice Committee meeting. On May 27th, at 5:00 p.m. in the Florian Gardens, there's the District Retirement Banquet. And on June 1st, at 7:00 p.m. in the Administration Building, is the next school board meeting. Tonight, we have a number of recognitions for our students and for our staff. And I'd like to begin by congratulating Rayanne Brenner from North Star Middle School and Mandy LaRusso from South Middle School, who are national history finalists. The girls and their families will spend the better part of a week in June staying on the campus at the University of Maryland, touring Washington DC sites, and of course, participating in the national final round of National History Day. I'd also like to congratulate the 2015 Memorial Girl Swim and Dive Team. They have been recognized by the National Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association of America as a Scholar Team Award Gold Level for having a cumulative grade point average of 3.76. The Fall and Winter Big Rivers Conference Sportsmanship Awards were recently announced, and those awards are voted upon by coaches and by officials. For the Fall Season, North won first place in boys soccer, and Memorial won first place in boys cross-country. For the Winter Season, the Eau Claire Hockey Co-op took first place in the girls hockey and boys swim and dive. And North won first place in wrestling, and Memorial took second place. So we're proud of the way that our coaches and students, athletes, represent themselves and their schools and our school district. And finally, I want to say a few words about the Visionaire Challenge, which is a unique statewide program for middle and high school students who are interested in both art and design for the 21st century. The goal of the program is to expose students to art and design through problem solving that includes feedback and interaction with design professionals in their respective fields. The challenges include design in spaces and places, communication and information, human interaction, and everyday things. The challenge provides students with an opportunity to explore design careers and to open their minds to the many possibilities that could await them in careers in their future. Several students in our district participated and received advanced or proficient design distinction. And some of them are with us tonight, with their teachers. And I'd like for them to stand and be recognized. Thanks very much. Thank you for coming out tonight to be recognized as well.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I like these reports. Very uplifting. Thank you. Just a couple of reminders. First, for the president's report, I just want to thank the board members who have signed up for graduation ceremonies. You can check with Patty if you're not sure the schedule. Also, I want to tell board members, and I'm sure Commissioner Hambach Boyle will get into this, it's an opportune time now to contact your regional legislators and joint finance committee members. They are making a lot of decisions right now about education. So it would not hurt to call them or write them on your opinions. And you can see the alert emails from WASB and WPN. I was asked by, I was asked by the Charter Committee to remind board members, if you have a chance to look over this book, Unsustainable, when they do a report next time, it'll kind of give you an idea where they're coming from. So if you have a, they asked me to remind you to take a look at that before that next meeting. And finally, I have, I just want to remind board members, there is a WASB training, the Summer Institute, July 18th, if you're interested in going to that. So that is my report. So next on the, is the Students' Representative Reports. Now, I believe this is your last night, you'll be graduating soon. Before you give your reports, we first want to very much thank you this past year for doing it. I've been very interested in your reports and what you've been saying has been going on in the high schools. So that's wonderful. And we want to provide you a couple gifts for your service to the board. So let me do that, and you can open these later after your report if you wish. So let me do that here. I just think it's a wonderful tradition here on our board to have, you know, students at the board, you know, contributing and listening to what is so important to the education of all our children. So it's really much appreciated, the service. So I don't know who wants to go ahead with the student, your last student report first. Hannah, go ahead.
I think I'm starting this one. Okay, so I was unable to attend the last meeting, but from several meetings ago, I had a couple ideas about ways that we could possibly promote the district. I know that we had talked about that in the work session. I've emailed a few of you with some of my ideas, but I just thought I'd bring them to the attention of the whole board. So I think that we could promote schools individually on the webpage and promote the good things that they're doing and make individual schools feel more special and more noticed, and maybe get some of the schools that don't hear about the other schools very often, have them notice the other schools on the webpage, because we use the webpage a lot. Another one of my ideas is to encourage more internships, to get more students out in the community, interacting with community members, building those community relationships, promoting their schools in the community. One of my ideas that I think would be a little bit more difficult to do, but I think it would be really rewarding, is to have an academic Hall of Fame at some of the high schools. I know that there's an Athletic Hall of Fame at North. And I think that promoting academics would be a good thing since it's a school. Another idea is more school collaboration, maybe encouraging mentorships between high school and middle school, or middle school and elementary school. And maybe that could make the transition between schools a little bit easier. And then the students entering in a new school would have people that they could trust and talk to and feel welcome with. I know that there are programs in place for that, like Link Crew and Web. But I feel like building more one-on-one relationships before they get to the transition would help the transition go a little bit smoother. And then more involvement in social media would be really cool. One of my ideas was maybe tweet at the district a favorite memory from the district or an event photo or something, and maybe have a spot on the webpage that we could feature those pictures and get the community to feel like their district is noticing them and recognizing the good things that they see happening in the district. And then, yesterday was North's baccalaureate service. And I know this is kind of a controversial thing since it's a religious service that happens with the school, but it's completely optional. And I think this was a very positive thing. Ours had a higher turnout than it does most years, and it had really positive feedback. And I think that it was a great way to bring the class together before graduation. And that was really cool. And then we also have the Pride Awards on June 3rd that recognizes students that have received scholarships and that get recognized by the departments. And I think this is another really positive thing that the school does to promote academics and achievement. And then I'd like to end by just thanking you for this great experience. I've really learned a lot about how many people a decision, or how many people go into making a decision, and how many people really care about us here in the Eau Claire School District. And it's really been a rewarding experience, and thank you.
Thank you. I've learned a lot, too. Thank you for all the great suggestions, too. Jonah?
Okay, I'll start just by piggybacking off what Hannah said. So President Barack Obama, today, actually, it was his first day of his new Twitter page. And he's one of my heroes. And his first couple of tweets have shown that Twitter doesn't have to be a monotonous, boring thing. It can be something that can, like, really interact with the community. So that's, that's something that going forward, that even, like, maybe a student rep could do. Just generationally, they might understand it a little bit better. And then something more serious, it's our senior year, and after AP tests, things can kind of digress. And classes are more relaxed, attendance frankly dips for some students. And I was thinking of ways to make this a more positive experience and something that's valuable. Because everyone, teachers and students are, everything is winding down. But we're going out into the work, we're going out into college and the workforce next year. And sometimes I feel unprepared in some, in some aspects of life. So I thought maybe like a seminar or two, or like a day, just a day dedicated to less academic things and more real-life applications, like fixing a car or how to do your taxes. I still barely know how to write a check. And some of these things are necessary when you go out. And I mean, if our goal is to educate the whole person, we're doing a fantastic job in educating, I know how to read 1800s literature fine. But doing some world, real-world things are still a struggle for a lot of people. So maybe look into that senior year. It'd be a valuable way to use our time. And that's all I have, but I'd really like to thank all of you guys. I'm very interested in, like, civic, having a civic responsibility. And this has really piqued my interest, being a part of this. And you guys have shown me that it takes tenacity, it takes grit to get some things done in our bureaucratic world. And just thank you for all the opportunities you've presented to me. Appreciate it.
You're most welcome, Jonah. Thank you. Maybe, maybe someday you'll run. Yeah. Yeah, great. Thank you both. Thank you both. And I'm glad, I'm glad it was a good experience for you. Board Committee Reports. I don't think we've had any committee meetings since the last meeting. Please remind me if we did. Okay. Okay. All right. So Commissioner Hambach Boyle, are you ready to do a legislative update?
Sure. I think, Rich, you've already brought up what I was going to really talk about tonight. Tomorrow is a crucial day. The Joint Finance Council starts to vote on K-12 education items in the proposed state budget. So the time to contact or connect with your legislators, if you haven't done so already, is now. The information in the legislative update from WASB, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, expects the following. The Joint Finance Council members are voting to approve, amend, or delete provisions from the budget proposed by the governor, and they hope to wrap up this by Memorial Day. So some major points are, WASB expects major voucher expansion and independent charter school expansion proposals to be approved on Tuesday, it's tomorrow, as well as a plan to transfer control of certain low-performing Milwaukee Public Schools to the Milwaukee County Executive. And that's been quite controversial. So in lieu of all of that, I think the major message being sent in contacting your legislators now, and that means now, tonight, tomorrow, is restoring the 127 million cut. But that merely takes us back to zero. And so it's imperative that when you connect with your legislators that you make it clear that you do know that and that that does not allow for any of the increases that have been, that we've experienced in our school district. So urge your legislators to restore the 127 million cut to the per pupil. Emphasize restoring that cut just brings us back to zero. And that is really all I wanted to say tonight, because that's the most important message we need to send. Thank you.
Good. Short, but important. Thank you. Okay. Next is our consent resolution agenda. The board is, consider approval for these. These are items that we've considered before or are pretty much a routine material or we've been given background material already. So any board member can ask to poll these to discuss separately. Otherwise, they'll be voted on in one vote. So I would consider a motion to approve the minutes of May 4th, 2015. I would consider a motion to approve the financial report of April 2015. I would consider a motion to approve the gifts in the amount of $17,631.56 for the period April 1, 2015 through April 30, 2015. I would approve, accept a motion to approve the payment of all bills in the amount of $5,81,128.3. Pull that, please. Pull that. I'll finish reading it. And that payroll in the amount of approximately $3 million for that period of April 1 through April 31. So we will poll that. I would ask for a motion to approve the Human Resources Employment Report. Ask for a motion to approve the Employee Handbook Modifications. I would ask for a motion to approve the Revisions to Policy 230, the Administration Administrative Team. Okay, so we have minutes of May 4th, financial report, gifts, Human Resources Employment Report, Employee Handbook Modifications, and Revisions to Policy 213. I would accept a motion to approve those. We have a motion. Commissioner Dux, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Commissioner Luganville. Can we take a roll call vote on that, please?
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vuul?
Abstain.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Okay, motion has passed. Sorry, I forgot about that. It's okay. So now we have a motion, a question about that one that was pulled on the bills?
No objection about the, no objection about the resolution. It's just that I thought we usually put that under individual resolutions for the payroll. Am I mistaken?
I don't know the history of that. I can't remember how it's been done regularly.
I think, I think we always had it that way because there were people that needed to abstain.
Yeah, good point. Good point. Thank you for pointing that out. We'll try and remember that.
I'm of approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Again, thank you for pointing that out. Do we have any discussion on that? Okay, so let's do a roll call vote on that, please.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Abstain.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vuul? Commissioner Jean?
Yes. All right. Motion has passed. Good point. All right, so now we're up to our individual resolutions for this evening. The first is the board committee assignments. And if you look on what's been given you, you can see the, my recommended committee assignments. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments about them. One was, practically every board member asked to be on policy and government, so I had a difficult decisions to make on that. And I just want to make, make the point that kind of the criteria I used was, I know there's a lot of backlog for that, and there's a lot of work to be done. So I tried to, one was find some board members who could put a lot of time into it at the moment. The other was, I really wanted to get at least one new board member on it so that they start learning policy and governments. I would have liked two, but because of scheduling and, and time commitments, I could get one on there. And I wanted to keep at least one experienced board member on there. So that's how that worked out, partly because of scheduling and partly because of time that could be put in on it. So I hope everyone's understanding of that. I would say, though, if any board members who are on the PNG, who are going to be on it, if you're going to miss a meeting, it might be nice to let one of the, like, Charles or Chu know, and they could show up and he had some experience on it. That would be, that would be good, I think, helpful. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I put on other committees, you see Commission on Shared Services. I had listed an alternate as Charles Vu. And the reason I did that is, one, Charles was very interested in that committee but wasn't sure he had the time to commit fully to it. But considering how that committee has met in the past, I haven't always been able to make it myself all the time. So it would be good to have him as an alternate for that, and it would give him experience on it also, especially with his UW background, I thought might be really beneficial to that. Yes, Commissioner Dux?
I didn't know you were going to say that, but...
Go ahead.
In the past, Mary Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, we haven't had alternates allowed.
Okay, and that's fine. That was one of my questions, if that's reasonable to do or not. And if not, then if, if I, what's been the past practice? Has, have we been allowed someone to show, go to that and replace someone else if they cannot go?
Maybe we need clarification on that, but that's been my experience, is that no alternates were allowed.
Okay, well, that's good to know. We're, it's silent in the policy, and then it would be fine to scratch it. So why don't we do an amendment to scratch that, and we can work that out later?
Well, I can check the booklet that we have on that. I'm not sure it's in there, but...
The booklet? You mean on?
For Shared Services.
Oh, for Shared Services. I see. Yes, and I haven't seen that, so, good, good point. Okay, so how about this? How about we have a motion to approve this, and then we could do an amendment to pull out the alternate piece?
So moved.
So we have a motion to approve...
Second.
The assignments we have from Commissioner Luganville, second from Commissioner Jean. Do we have an amendment then to scratch the alternate piece?
I don't really want to do it until I find out.
Okay, so you want to leave it for now?
If that's all right.
That's fine with me. It's whatever the board is comfortable with is okay with me. It was just a thought to make it easier in the future, so. Okay, so we'll leave it for now. And if it, if Shared Services doesn't allow it, then we just won't, won't do it. So, no, that's fine. I'm glad you brought that up. I didn't know about their rule on that, so. I didn't know about their rule on that, so. Any other discussion or questions about the committee assignments? Okay. Great. Great. Thank you for everyone committing to serve. Yes?
I just wanted to make sure everybody here and in the audience, they're, they're posted on our website, right?
Well, they're in Board Docs right now.
On Board Docs.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Again, thank you for your service and volunteering to do all this. Second on our agenda is the WERMC agreement. It's called, it's the Wisconsin Educators Risk Management Cooperation. I don't know if we have anyone, Marianne, to speak on this or say anything about it. Explain it. Dan, you want to explain what it is?
The board is, or the district has been a member of WERMIC since its inception. Oh, I think that was back in 2010, 11, ways back. What it is, it's a consortium of school districts that has joined together to leverage premium for property and casualty and worker compensation insurance. Along with the membership, we have access to a full-time risk management consultant, which we draw on at least weekly, if not multiple times a week. So the price that is paid by the Eau Claire district to the consortium is well worth the money spent. There are educational opportunities. Anytime that we have a risk event that needs special attention, professional attention, we get it, and we get it promptly. So one of the things with the consortium is they require an annual board approval of the 660301 agreement. So that's why it's before you tonight.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Do we have any questions for Dan or any discussion about this?
I guess I'm just curious. Do we use this cooperative to purchase cyber liability coverage?
Cyber liability coverage is one of the coverages that we, that we purchase, right?
No. Is that something that they provide resources on?
No. The, the consortium does not provide insurance. It provides...
But I, I'm sorry. I'm talking like education. Do they do classes on that or do they have online?
In fact, that was a topic of a recent annual, we have two meetings a year, and that was a topic, one of those two meetings. That is very, very much a current topic.
Good question. Joe, just turn off your thing when you're done. Thank you. Good. Other questions? This is something we annually do and use our services, so. Okay. I think we should do a roll call vote on this, please. We haven't got a motion yet. Could I have a motion? Thank you.
So moved.
We have a motion. Commissioner Hambach Boyle, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Vu? Okay. Now we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. All right. Third on our list of individual resolutions is the summer meeting schedule. The reason this is before us is because we just have a couple of decisions to make mostly regarding around the summer. In the past, we have met, for example, two meetings in June. They would normally be June, like 1st and 15th. So the first question is, do we want to meet both of those meetings or not, considering that we're also doing some strategic planning meetings during that month or at least doing one of those. And typically, we also meet only once in July, but it's possible to meet twice. And if you look in the agenda, maybe we can pull that up there. I don't know if we can put that up in the agenda item there, Patty. We could see what the possible dates are. And so those are, let's see, and let's see if there are other questions on that. Oh, and the September dates that we would have our committee meetings. So the first question really is, do we want two June meetings or just one? And if we wanted a second, maybe some discussion about what we'd want, be interested in covering. So that's why we put this before us. I wanted to run it by the board to see what they were interested in doing. So the two June meetings could be 1st and 15th, or if we do just one, then it would be just June 1st. So any question, any comments or thoughts about that? Commissioner Jean?
No. I believe we have the data review on the 22nd, correct?
Strategic. Yes.
Yes.
On June 22nd. Correct.
So why can't we have it on the same night?
Yeah. The board meeting.
The data review is scheduled at this point from 5:00 until 8:00 PM, and it's possible that it could run past 8:00 PM on that evening because of the, the amount of data that has to be reviewed and also the follow-up to the work that you did tonight. So we're anticipating a very long meeting that evening.
Okay. Other preferences? We could use a motion. Let's do the June first, June question first. We could have a motion on what you would prefer, and we can talk about that if you want.
I move that we meet June 1st as the only meeting of June.
Okay. We have a motion that it's just June 1st. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
We have a second, Commissioner Jean. Comments, questions, concerns? What would people prefer? One thought was, well, we could make the June 20th meeting a work session, make it lighter, but you still have that strategic planning meeting two days later. Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
We will still continue committee meetings and as such.
I think so, and that's pretty much up to each committee and their workload. I, you know, if you have work to do, yeah, I would hope so.
Yeah. We would be meeting.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no objection, I think I'll just do a voice vote on this. All those in favor of having the meeting on, in June, on just June 1st, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we will have just one meeting in June. July. Typically, we've had, I think, for quite a few years, just once in July, but the question is, do we want another one? So we have July 6 and 20th. Any preferences there? And again, we have, when is the strategic planning meeting?
That's July 27th.
That's July 27th. Okay. So that's, so we have a second meeting already with that. So we could have it, let's see, the dates were July 6 and 20th. Any suggestions? We have to have one board meeting per month, just so you know. And I'm going to take a motion also.
I move that we meet on the 6th in July.
And only the 6th.
And only the 6th.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Second? We have a second. Commissioner Vu? Any comments, questions? This seems rather non-controversial to me, but... Yes, Patty, are you looking at me funny? Okay. I thought maybe I, I missed something. When you give me that look, I think, oh, I must have missed something. Yes.
That is the Monday following the July 4th weekend.
Yeah. July 4th. Right. So...
I think that's why they're looking at it.
Looking at it. Yeah. So if that's okay with everyone, and you can meet still, then, so Commissioner Dux cannot.
I'm coming back that day, so I might make it.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think I'll be around, but I'm not positive, so, but, go ahead, Commissioner Hambach Boyle.
So would the option, I don't know if I'm doing the right order here with what's been out on the floor, but would, would a better option be to have it on the 20th as opposed to the 6th?
And I would be fine with that.
I'm fine with that, too.
I think it would run less with the holiday if others could make that the 20th. Okay. Commissioner Jean?
Now, does it have to be on the 6th or the 20th? Could we do it on the 13th?
Oh, I think so. It could.
So long as there's one a month, correct?
Yeah. Right. So would the, would people prefer the 13th?
I'm, I'm just giving options now.
Oh, it's possible. The 13th is okay with me also. We're just kind of meshing schedules here. It's really all we're doing. Did you have something to say? Or I saw you. Okay. All right. Preferences. Shoot. What?
There's a motion over there.
Yes, there is. There is a motion. I guess we'll, we'll finish that off. All those in favor making it July 6th, say aye. Opposed? No? No? Okay. So it's kind of silly, bud. That's kind of silly. All right. So just some discussion. Who, can we just do a quick raise of hands? Who would like it the 13th? Okay. Who would like it the 20th? What's the next date? 20th?
3.
I think 13th won on that. I saw four at least for the 13th. So Patty did not like the 13th. Is 13th okay? Is that reasonable with everybody? We can do 13th. Okay. Let's just do the 13th. Sound good? All right. All right. Let's do 13th. And we have the, the strategic planning meeting on the 27th. Correct. Correct. Okay. Good. It was getting kind of silly doing motions on that, so. All right. Great. So we'll do the 13th. All right. Great. Mike, I think you are up for a committee report on demographic trends. Mike Falch is the Chair of our Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee. He's done a great job facilitating it this past year along with Dan, as the staff member helping out. And demographic trends and facilities required to give an annual report to the school board each year at the end of the year, and he's got a report for us to show what was worked on.
Thank you, Rich.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
I'm just going to plow ahead with this thing. If you want to stop me with questions, if you would like any explanation or any detail, just interrupt me because otherwise I'm just going to plow right through the thing. After that scheduling discussion, I just, you know, it's a hard act to follow.
I know.
The Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee was created in 2008 after closing Little Red to help the district look ahead and not behind when it came to student demographics and facility planning. The committee began meeting again this last November and concluded their work in April. We looked at a variety of topics and attempted to determine a course of action whenever we could. We didn't always agree, but we all support the recommendations we will be reviewing. To begin, I'd like to thank the entire committee for their hard work and dedication to the process. We had a lot of information to disseminate, which led to some great discussions and we think sound recommendations. I would also like to thank my co-chair, Dan Vandewater, for his leadership and the ability to find the information we were looking for. And last but not least, thanks to all the staff across the district for their time and effort providing information for the committee. It was critical for our success. The charge of the committee is it is a standing committee to provide annual recommendations to the Board of Education regarding demographic trends, boundary issues, capacity updates, and other relevant data. This allows for long-range predictability of attendance areas, facility needs, and programmatic First item I'd like to talk about is a capital referendum. And our recommendation on a capital referendum is, there's a listing out there that I believe you've seen already of capital projects totaling forty-six million dollars that were presented to the committee, and we agreed that a capital referendum should be considered by the board. Priorities should be given to improvements to South Middle School, possibly Roosevelt, and then other maintenance items deemed a priority by facilities administration. Charlie Kramer and his staff do an excellent job of maintaining a lot of buildings with a minimal budget. The committee encourages the board and community to continue investing in our district buildings. The next thing I'd like to talk about briefly is an APL. We get an APL study periodically, which offers a summary of enrollment projection analysis for the Eau Claire area school district. And our recommendation regarding APL is we request that administrators look at open enrollment, closing schools to intra-district transfers, and implement overflow policies as ways to alleviate overcrowding in the elementary schools with a possible option of transitional boundaries. We also recommend that we indefinitely limit open enrollment and alternate school requests to North High School only. It was also suggested that the feasibility of continuing Sage or its replacement be reviewed again by the board as is creating capacity issues at some schools. We also recommend, in order to meet the needs of our community, that we would like to see district boundaries be reviewed every once every five years. The results of the APL survey point to steadily increasing enrollment in the Eau Claire area school district over the next decade. The baseline model indicates the most growth, while the two-year trend showed steady to slightly declining 4K to 12 enrollment. Three of the four models show K-5 enrollment increasing in the near term, while grades six and eight and nine through 12 likely will see increasing enrollment for the foreseeable future. The five-year projection for both high schools shows that Memorial is likely to have greater growth than North, which would continue to increase the gap in enrollment between the schools. There are currently 11,016 students enrolled in the Eau Claire area school district. The APL study compared to past enrollment numbers have stayed rather straight-lined with light growth. A wild card to be considered in the district's enrollment numbers will be the voucher program and its widespread availability. Ramifications will not be realized until the program is implemented. To date, no Eau Claire area school district students have been lost to the voucher program. However, we do not know what the future holds. The committee also discussed having the principals at localized crowded schools such as Flynn, Lake Shore, Medoview, and Roosevelt provide a report to the board or the demographic trends committee. What are those schools' needs and how are their students impacted by overcrowding? What would shifting boundaries or enrollment help? Building capacities were discussed. Sage schools being looked at for possible capacity concerns. And that pretty much covers that. The next item is about homelessness in the district.[1526.26] When we were doing one of our, when we were studying the differences in enrollment between North and Memorial, one of the documents we received is the number of homeless students we have in the Oakley Area School District. And I personally was shocked to find out that we have 234 students across the district that don't have a place to live. They're considered homeless by the district when they don't, when they register and do not have a permanent address. And it's a demographic that's not often mentioned. While the community and the district already do a lot in this area, it's never enough. And we do not have a recommendation for the board, but we wanted to highlight a demographic of our most vulnerable children in the district. The next thing we talked about was probably our most engaging and controversial item is the difference in enrollments between North and Memorial. Rich, wouldn't you agree with?
I would, yes.
It was quite the discussion.
Quite interesting.
We have the principals from North Memorial here. Thank you, gentlemen, for all your time and effort. I mean, I learned a lot from meeting with them. We spent two whole meetings with them and had some really great discussions and got a better understanding of what goes on at the schools. As far as enrollment differences between North and Memorial, after much discussion, we would recommend, and with the understanding that every solution has its own set of challenges and problems, the committee recommends that the board take action to balance enrollment to improve course offerings. Four broad areas of change have been identified. These are presented in the order from least impact to greatest impact, also the easiest to implement and the most difficult to implement. The committee feels that the administrators at North and Memorial should have significant input on which recommendations should be tried. The first of these areas is indefinitely limit open enrollment and alternate school requests to North High School only. The second is develop a magnet or STEM school at North High School to attract students from across the district. The third is to implement a gradual boundary change in areas to be identified by the administration. Any changes should be phased in initially as a voluntary change that becomes mandatory at a later date. And fourth, the hardest one, is to create a grade 9-10 building and a grade 11-12 building. And no discussion was had about which building would be which, just in general, it seems to cover a lot of the bases on things we were running into when we were studying the differences between North and Memorial. The committee reviewed numerous documents in an effort to understand the program and academic performance differences between North and Memorial, and the impact of enrollment differences between the buildings, which for the 14-15 school year, North had 1,305 students, Memorial had 1,718 students. It's a difference of 413 students. Some of the things we looked at was a May 14, 2014 comparison of economically disadvantaged AP test results from Memorial and North, seven-year history of the WKCE ACT and AP test results, and we used the updated APL study. We looked at a five-year test comparison between North and Memorial. We looked at win-loss comparison between athletic programs at North and Memorial. We looked at the May 2014 AP test comparison for economically disadvantaged students. We had comments from the Oakley North Girls' Basketball Coach. We looked at high school staffing ratios provided by Dr. Leibum. We then, we looked at the homeless counts by school. One other thing we looked at was post-secondary enrollment and trends of Oakley Area School District graduates. We compared Oakley Area School District test results with Appleton, Green Bay, Kenosha, Racine, and La Crosse, Sheboygan, and Wausau. We looked at Title I allocation information, Title I expenditures, Title I free/ reduced history, five-year test data for economically disadvantaged students. We looked at the student engagement surveys from North and Memorial. We looked at the five-year AP history for both schools. We looked at GIF reports for both schools. And then we also met with administrative staff at both schools to better understand the issues facing them and how enrollment differences create programming issues, especially with advanced placement classes. Both schools offer the same classes, but the number of sections is often less at North. And that's just surely because there's not enough kids to offer three sections of an AP class. Just, let's see, the committee was very impressed with how both staffs creatively and cooperatively worked together to maximize educational opportunities wherever possible. Distance learning is even used where appropriate. The committee discovered the deeper it looked at the two schools, the more complex the issue became, and there is no single answer to improve the situation. Example of this is the student-teacher ratio at North is significantly better than at Memorial, but there does not be a direct correlation between class sizes and test scores between the schools. Other factors such as a higher economically disadvantaged students at North make this a difficult issue to address. It's not clear that increased enrollment alone would be the answer. However, an enrollment change could allow greater program offerings at North. This would be a positive change that should be encouraged voluntarily and with program equity in mind. And the district needs to take care that if increases in enrollment at North, that the free and reduced lunch rate is not increased along with enrollment. This would be counterproductive to improve learning and equalizing resources. Working with administration and equity committee could help guide these types of changes, which makes me realize I forgot a recommendation for that. One of the recommendations of the committee was that they, we would recommend that the board develop a program equity group that is separate from the demographic trends and facilities planning committee to look at program equity issues between North and Memorial. And the last item we looked at is Little Red. Our recommendation for Little Red is to continue to hold the property as a viable part of the district's inventory utilized by the district for storage needs, and continue to hold it for future educational purposes. It has value to the district with little overhead cost. It closed in 2008. It's located, everybody knows where it is. The building is in good shape and is being heated at a minimum of 50 degrees and is being used for storage. It's monitored regularly for integrity. The roof is good. Long-term, the property has significant value as water and sewer gets closer. It is felt that the property should be kept as an investment against having to pay a large amount of money in the future to acquire land to do the same thing after the area is more developed. Best use at this time is for school storage, unless a renter would want it. The district is open to renting or selling the facility, but it's not actively being marketed. And based on enrollment numbers, there's not enough growth to constitute acquisition of new school sites, only the need for expansion of current sites. It was suggested Little Red make a good overflow site. And then when Little Red is closed, the board did not vote to close it permanently. They left the possibility of it being reopened, and that policy still applies. That in a nutshell is our report.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I wanna thank you for all the work you put in the report, and I wanna thank the demographic trends that put a lot of time in discussing these issues. For the board here, there's really four sets of recommendations. There was the capital referendum, the APL study, North Memorial enrollment differences, and Little Red. I was wondering if we could just go through each of those, and then you could ask questions of Mike if need be, and we can discuss. So first, the capital referendum. We've seen a lot of data about this before, about maintenance needs. Do you have any questions or comments on that? And we will be talking referendum later also. Commissioner Zhang.
How much of that is going to solve?
I believe it's 22 million.
Yes, that's, I think that's about right.
So about half is gonna be solved?
About 22 million is that number, 22 million, right? Kramer, Mr. Kramer, yes. Yes, you're welcome. As you can see, we have a fair amount of backlog of maintenance needs. Okay, how about the APL study? The APL study was addressing ways to look at different capacity issues in the schools, and there were four recommendations in there. Do you have any questions or comments or preferences about these? I think administration would really like some guidance from the school board about which of these we think might, might be more appropriate than others. For example, we had looked at Sage, what, probably two years ago? I think about two years ago, the board had decided, well, let's just keep it as is now, but it may be time to think about it again. So if you want to do that, we can, we can. So thoughts on these four bullets here about the APL study? Mr. Zhang.
Now, when you're saying that for us to review it again, you want a, the board to, the whole board to review it, or you wanna send it to a committee?
Well, I think, you know, these are the things that came out of demographic trends, the things that could be done. And I, I think the superintendent and administration would like, you know, some guidance from the board on if there's some things that are out of bounds, or, you know, what should they not look at? Or do you want to send it back to demographic trends and narrow it down, or, you know, where do we wanna go? Do you want administration to consider all of these? So they need some feedback from the board on those thoughts. Commissioner Dux.
Well, I was, I was just thinking that it might be good if we had a work session just on the APL recommendations, because they're pretty detailed and complex, and we could maybe get even more detail from you about the study. Because I'm very interested in hearing why you recommended a 9-10 building and 11-12 building.
Yeah, we'll get to that with the Memorial-North differences in a minute, but we can talk a little bit about that.
And also, if you had any recommendations, I know we do have staff that pays attention to the homeless and tries to monitor their needs, but it's, it's very disturbing, as I said on the McKinley Board ex officio, and it's really...
It's sad, it's very sad.
Really upsetting.
Let me, let me just read those four from the APL study again. It said, we could look at open enrollment, meaning closing some schools, intra-district transfers, meaning those that are at capacity, overcapacity, won't let open enrollment go into those. And there's another one about limiting open enrollment to North High School. Then it was looking at Sage was the third one. And the other one was district boundaries being reviewed every five years, which seems to make sense to me. Superintendent Hardabek, would any of these be, would administration be implementing any of these soon, or do we need to, like, what timeframe should we be thinking about these?
Well, there are, there are some proposals to change the Sage program that are at the state level, and we're not quite sure yet how those changes will affect us. So that will be something that we will be following closely and will respond to as those changes are made, as they're finalized at the state level. I think in terms of open enrollment, and I would defer to Mr. Leibum on this, but I, we need some lead time. If we're going to, if you, if you want these things to go into effect for the 2015-16 school year, we would need to know by June, you know, whether or not you wanted these things to go into effect, because we have to act on open enrollments and we also have to act on intra-district transfers. So that would require some decision from the board, and it would have to take place at that first-June meeting. Is that...
Yes, the board will approve open enrollment. Students requesting to come to the district and leave the district at the June 1st, and we need to notify families by the 5th of June. This is more a secondary issue at the elementary level. We already do not place students in grades or schools that are at or overcapacity. So that, that's already taking place. Open enrollment is to the district, and then the district chooses what school or what grade level they would go to. But yes, if you're gonna look to make adjustments at the secondary level especially, we would need to know that by June 1st for the 15-16 school year.
Okay. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I have a question about open enrollment. Would we ever close totally to open enrollment? We would never be at that capacity, right? Okay.
So there's really, in terms of open enrollment, we're talking, like, partly between elementary schools, whether or not we'd allow that, but also, like, into Memorial versus North also. So I don't remember the, which ones are, Tim, which one, which elementary schools are we at with capacity overcapacity?
Flynn, Lake Shore, Metta View, coming up, and Roosevelt are the ones that are at or near, at capacity or slightly overcapacity.
Are we okay for this coming year?
Yes, because not only are there schools, but we also look at grade levels. We can find grade levels with schools that have undersubscribed enrollments and places students there. At times, open-enrolled families will choose not to accept that school and choose to keep their school and, or their child in their home school. That's up to the family, and they can make that decision up to the third Friday count in September.
Okay, so we don't necessarily have to take action. So, but some, some schools are getting pretty crowded. Go ahead.
If you chose to close Memorial to intra-district transfer or to open enrollment, you would have to make a decision on June 1st.
Right, I was thinking of the elementary schools right now. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so let's, let's, let's look at high schools separate. Okay, so elementary schools. So how about the high school then? What do board members think about that, closing it to Memorial and going just to North? Well, I guess I just have a question. Let me, let me pick. Commissioner Dux, go ahead.
Well, I, I just thought it made, the recommendation makes sense since we're sort of under-enrolled, and Memorial is pretty much, is at capacity.
I don't know if I'd call it that capacity. It could take more students, but it's just disparity between the two schools. It was about 400 students.
Yeah.
That was the whole thinking, is to bring North closer to Memorial in enrollment.
Sure. Okay. Favorable to that.
Okay. Commissioner Luganville, you got a question?
I guess I just had a question maybe for Dr. Hardabek or Mr. Leibum with, with regards to like an administrative rule on open enrollment or intra-district transfers. Are there areas that that, that you feel it should be changed or tightened to be in, you know, to work with what they're recommending? Because currently, the way I've kind of heard is that it's very difficult already for, you know, especially at the high school level. So what specifically, in terms of an administrative rule or in terms of board action, would really change that?
Well, the intra-district transfer rule is something that policy and governance has had on their docket to look at for, for this year and, and haven't just gotten to it yet. We've been in the process of doing audits and collecting data about the transfers and the transfer process. Those reports are pretty much ready to go. I think the question, though, comes from the demographic and trends, is the disparity in enrollment between North and Memorial. And one strategy would be to close Memorial to intra-district transfer, intra-district transfer, and also to close it to open enrollment. And any student who, any high school student who came to our district from a, from an outside school would have to enroll at North.
How many of these transfer requests do we normally get on a given year? Does it just, is it completely different each year, or...
The last several years, it's been fairly consistent, about 30 to 40 students between the two high schools both ways. There used to be some greater disparity there, but the last three or four, it's been about 30 students either way.
And, and just as an additional point for your information is, I think that two high school principals have worked very hard to put some consistent practices in place. We'd like to see those practices codified in, in an administrative role and tied to our policy.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I have a couple of questions. So we're looking at thinking that in, making the enrollment somewhat the same helps. And my question would be, are the needs of the students being met at North and Memorial at the enrollment they are already at?
There was a, Mike, you could, maybe you should address this more. There were several things that came up.
I came away from our discussion thinking it's more, somewhat a matter of perception. I'm seeing, from what we found out during our discussions, that the programs are as close to being equal as they possibly can be. The classes in AP, for example, are the same. Where you run into inequity is the number of offerings.
So are the, so Mike, are the number of offerings dependent on the number of students?
It can, it can be, yes.
Okay.
It likely is, and you don't...
So, so Mike, Mike, I guess as a board member, I'm not looking at numbers, the same numbers as both high schools, as being, if they're getting what they need, as much as it would be to use the space at North in a more innovative way for students that may wanna, you know, or, you know, I'm on the, the choice charter committee, and we've had lots of discussions about what that would look like. I mean, that's kind of where my mind goes as a board member.
There was definitely that discussion about economies of scale, as, as Mike mentioned. What the, some board, some committee members at the committee had said, if you go to that list of areas that they suggested to improve the differences between North and Memorial, there were four on there, and that was basically brainstorming those four. And they said, oh, we might even come up with more. And so I think the original thought there was, well, maybe over the next year, demographic trends could weigh the advantages and disadvantages of some of these over the next year, maybe give a recommendation to the board on these. The ones, like they said, limit enrollment, develop a magnet school, implement the gradual boundary change, create this 9-10, 11-12 building, those were all, kind of came out of brainstorming at one session, really. So we're not asking to approve any of these, but, except for perhaps if we wanna limit enrollment at Memorial. So I think the thought was that we would go back and flesh them out more and think harder about what the advantages and disadvantages and maybe others would come up on those. I think before us tonight, I think the biggest feedback is if we wanna think about limiting open enrollment in one school or not. And I think the other question is like Sage, do we wanna talk about Sage at some point more deeply? Commissioner Dux.
Is it not true that you, you did have studies that you looked at? Because I know, Mr. Leibum, we've, we've done some of that work already. Is that what you saw, that they were pretty comparable?
Studies on...
On the two high schools?
We just looked at a lot of different things. We, we looked at the number of AP students in both schools, that's one thing we looked at. We looked at test scores between these schools, just in general on our graph, we didn't get into the little detail. What else did we look at? There was just so much right here.
Well, my point is that we have done quite a bit of work on equity, because, you know, we had complaints in the past, and you've probably got to see some of that.
Yes. I mean, there, there's, there's a lot of people that feel that North's getting the short end of the stick. You know, there's a perception out there, they're getting the short end of the stick, and in some areas, they're maybe not getting as much as Memorial, just because of the volume of students. Number of course offerings is what I'm driving at. Number of athletic teams. You know, it's just, it's a numbers game. And, but what's being provided to the school, as far as I can tell, from what we found, is comparable, equal, I mean, is, you can make it, wouldn't you have that many different numbers of students?
Commissioner...
I'm looking at the last sentence in the recommendation. It says, working with administration and equity committee could help guide this type of changes to consider demographic and equity. Could you expand more on that? And would it be possible to include at least parents' input on this suggestion?
As far as the makeup of an equity committee, I would fully expect to have parents involved in that process, along with administration and the board and members of demographic trends, if that makes sense. I mean, it's, I think the broader spectrum you have of a committee like that, the better result you're gonna have. It's one of the things I've always liked about the demographic trends committee, is the spectrum of people on the committee. We have board members, we have administration, we have community members, we have parents, we have somebody from county board, we have somebody from the Chamber of Commerce. You know, it's just a good mix of different viewpoints that we have on that committee already, that I would expect the equity committee to have the same kind of makeup, that we get the best result out of, I think.
Thank you. And in that case, I would prefer that the board not make insufficient, not make a decision without lots of work on and well-thought and lots of information. So it's better in this case for us to consider the recommendation here, meaning defer to administration and the equity committee to work on and bring back pros and cons, and both of the board just vote on.
Yeah, so just to summarize, I'll get you a second. So to summarize, look into it more in depth through a committee, but not look, change enrollment practices as of now. Now, one thing you... Now, one thing you mentioned was basically we'd like the makeup of a committee, much like demographic and trends, and perhaps we could send it back to demographic and trends to look at more as an equity committee, at least for a while. Maybe they'd come up with a charge.
You're making more work for us.
I know, I am, I am. Well, and the question really is, is it part of the charge of the demographic and trends or committee or not to do that, to delve into equity questions? My, my concern about forming another committee is, you know, we already have compensation committees and we have a start time committee, so if we were gonna form this, we'd certainly want to wait a while because the staff is already has a lot going on. So we could look at the charge of the demographic trends and see if, if you're willing to look at it as an equity committee also to some extent. So that, that is one thought. Commissioner McBoyle?
Mike, I heard you say a couple of times the word perception. So I sit here as a board member thinking that's where we need to work on is the perception. I think that it would behoove us to really look at what demo and trends did, back their research and their information, and really work on that perception with our community and the fact that it isn't numbers. It's are the kids' needs being met and how well are they being met, period? And within that conversation, those other things will come up, I guess. That's where I'm coming from.
Yes, okay. Okay, so regarding the North Memorial question and enrollment question, is the board comfortable just having demographic and trends look at these options that we'd come up with and come back with some advantage, disadvantage? I guess we could also talk about, actually, I'm not on the committee this year, but the, the committee could look at, I'll give you more work. The committee could look at what an equity committee might look like or whether it would be different. They could do that also. Is this where I hear you heading and not making any decisions about enrollment? Yeah, Commissioner?
Well, the, the magnet school piece, because of the, talking about that, that STEM piece came up, if I am correct, in the survey. And so that was the parent survey, right? Yeah. So that's the piece I think I'd really like to get more information on. What would that look like? How would that integrate there? Would it be innovation zone? What would it, you know, what would that look like?
The principals told us they already have STEM offerings at both schools.
Well, it's project lead the way, yeah.
So that's already, that's already started. What that STEM idea came from is to find a way to make people want to go there, you know, find a magnet school, and STEM was the one that was talked about. It could be something else. I mean, it's just something that parents across the district say, I want my kid involved in that. And this is, you know, and we put it in a spot that makes the most sense for the district, North, because they have room and their enrollment is less. We want people, and that also changes perception of, North is a good place to get an education, because it is.
Well, as we look towards innovation in our district, I think that's, that's the piece that I, I look at. If there's, if there's room or that prevails itself, I think it would behoove us to really look at that.
Okay. Yeah, and one time North did have, that went under, it had a basically charter on STEM at one time. So this is kind of looking at that idea again. Hopefully it learned from what happened before. On this topic, North Memorial, any other questions, comments, and I'll see if I can summarize, hopefully. Commissioner Dux?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're talking about. You want a committee to study equity? I think that's already been done and been given to the demographic and trends committee, so they, am I right?
I mean, we do talk about it. It just came up in our discussions that maybe there should be a separate equity committee. That was a committee member's suggestion and ended up, ended in our recommendations. But we do kind of, we already addressed that, you know, we do look at that. That is part of our talks and part of what we look at in evaluating what's going on, so.
And I, I think that the issue was, some of the members, was it clear that it was really part of the charge of demographic trends facilities to do that? So if the board is comfortable with that, they can certainly continue doing that. Yeah, okay. Okay, so the board is not looking at changing enrollment policies now then for the two high schools, if I'm understanding it right, will send it back to demographic trends and, demographic trends and facilities to weigh these various options, thinking of advantages and disadvantages, and also act as an equity group if there's other issues regarding equity that they would like to explore, they could do that. Am I understanding that correctly? Is that second in a minute, it's okay, the way I said it. Okay, good. Commissioner McBoyle?
I, I just wanted to kind of maybe think about a timeline. This discussion's gone on and on and on and on for a long time, so I think then we have to really make a decision.
June 1st.
Yep.
Well, right, so if, if, if I heard that we're not going to think about open enrollment changes, then there is no decision made June 1st. We, we will get, we have to approve something coming up though, correct? That date?
Yes, on June 1st, you will receive a list of students by their ID numbers, of those from other districts requesting to come to the O'Clare District and the grade level, and those students who are in our school district requesting to access schools outside the district. So you improve those as a whole, including some that have been denied for various reasons. Once that's done, on June 2nd, we would be then prepared to send a letter to these families identifying that they have been approved for open enrollment or denied, and the school placement that we are offering them. They then would have until the 3rd Friday in September to make a decision on to accept that offer or not. There are phone conversations that take place during this period of time, people calling, may I go here, may I do this, you know, there's responses from these families once they see their placement. But we would need to know by the second if something was going to change, because especially at the high school level, the process and the, the parameters we put in place for making decisions would be different, so we would need to put out a different letter to those families. We could easily do so, but we would need to know after that board meeting on the 1st.
Thank you. And I agree with Commissioner Vu that we don't want to do anything rash on that, because it also can provide a disincentive for students to transfer to the district if we do it incorrectly also. Back to the APL study, I wanted to get back to about Sage. Does the board want to look at Sage again in the future? I know administration has asked this before and may ask again. Do we want to investigate Sage over this next year? Certainly, I don't think for this coming year might be kind of rash again quickly, but do you want to look at the Sage program? Because that does limit capacity in some schools. Commissioner John?
I would like to. Mainly, I guess I need to know numbers and pros and cons in every school that we have Sage in.
Okay, so some kind of report about Sage, okay.
Does one be?
So, let me, I have to recognize you, Jim. I think Commissioner Vu is next, go ahead. Oh, no? I saw it on.
Yeah, it's about, I was questioning the academic load or the workload that the principal will have to give up in order to prepare the report. Is it a practice for the district to prepare the report in consultation with the principal?
You mean the Sage report?
We have a number of versions of the Sage report that we've already put together. I think the key question here will be, what changes will come as a result of action taken at the state level? And how will that impact our current programs now? Will it change anything? Will it, will it alter our contracts in any way? Will it alter our ability to engage in future contracts? That would probably be information that should come to the board, along with the report, that maybe a revisiting of the report that was done previously.
Commissioner, do you still have a comment? Oh, okay. Commissioner McBoyle?
Yeah, the Sage thing is going to be up, be brought up legislatively, right, Mary Ann? Yeah, and from what I've read, I should have brought that up too, is there could be quite a few changes relative to that information, so just so you know.
Commissioner Dux?
And I think that's why we have to look at it again, if you have new information about how the state is, is treating it. Because we've studied it pretty thoroughly on previous boards, maybe they can look at some of the reports. But the question for me is, what is the state doing about it?
Okay, so it seems, makes sense that we have a report on the changes and perhaps what we might do in response to that. Okay, okay, that's good to know. Yes, Commissioner?
There's a possibility that Sage could be gone.
Correct, yes, and, yes, right, or some major changes that effectively make it gone. Just on the equity question, I remember Commissioner John, you had, you had a agenda item request basically on this issue, and I hope our discussion is helping you address that somewhat. It is. Thank you. I hope that covers the capital referendum, APL study and North enrollment differences, those topics. And the report was also about Little Red. Do you have any questions about Little Red and the recommendation and discussion there? It's pretty much, it's useful for us right now. There's no reason to get rid of it. Commissioner Vu?
It was mentioned that the service facility was being looked at to see if that can be relocated to the Little Red, and it was decided that that's not real, a viable option. I want to know more about detail.
Mainly because it doesn't have garage facilities that are needed for the heavy equipment that the district uses. They'd have to be, all be built out there. Am I kind of enlightening with that, Charlie? I mean, the, the infrastructure isn't there to support a service center for the district for running their facilities, operations out of. Right now, all you're storing dirt and gravel and things of that nature, often in addition to old equipment and cabinets and things that the district uses in other buildings. But it really isn't conducive to spending a lot of money. You'd have to spend a lot of money to make it into a service center, service center. I guess that's what I'm trying to say around about.
Thank you, and I was thinking right along the line of future referendum. I think the public would be interested to know how the district make use of its resource. And that question might be asked, that's why I asked.
Well, I'm sure, it has been already and will continue to be asked. And that's part of the reason it came up in our discussions again, just so we looked at it and we could communicate to the public that we have looked at Little Red and doesn't, in our opinion anyway, it didn't make sense to try to get rid of it. It has a use to the district as, as it is right now.
Good question. Commissioner McBoyle?
I, I just have to say as a board member too, I think our district, I think it's unique in the sense that, Mike, thanks for heading up demo and trends. As a community member, that's kind of amazing that we have a community member and other community members part of our demographic and trends and that we have that kind of input as a district. So thank you for your hard work from all of us on the board.
Absolutely. I hope I can recruit you to continue.
So you want me to sign up and do this again?
Yeah, I can give you a contract.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner John?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking over the details on enrollment and program differences between North and Memorial. I know we passed this.
That's okay, yes, go ahead.
Okay, specifically for the broad areas that were identified here, point number C, no, D, I'm sorry, trying to make 9th and 10th and then 11th and 12th buildings, was transportation looked at?
Not yet, no. It was a broad idea on something that would take care of a lot of the issues that are, that we're dealing with, with A, B, and C. You know, that they're all, in some ways, just a Band-Aid on the thing. You know, that's kind of the way it is. Or this, while it has other issues and a lot of them, it is not a perfect solution. It takes care of a lot of the underlying things, the differences between the two schools, because they'd all be one.
Okay, thank you. But Commissioner John, your point is well-taken. That would be a huge endeavor and a lot of questions if that were gonna happen. Okay, has everyone had their questions answered? Have we covered this well enough for anyone about demographic transit committee, facilities committee? It's really a great committee. They look at a lot of great issues, so. Okay, thanks again very much, Mike. We greatly, really appreciate it. Okay, so next we have the Project Lead the Way. We have a report on that. Oh, I forgot, any public comments about, from, for that last report? For the committee report? Okay, no, thank you.
Good evening. Kristin Matsko, I'm working right now as the School Decreers Coordinator here for the district, working with both North Memorial. And with me is my team of people that we have worked quite a bit this year on Project Lead the Way, specifically quite a bit together, actually, on many things, but specifically tonight, Project Lead the Way. You already alluded to Dave Volk and Dave Oldenburg, and also Mr. Scott Erickson, who teaches right now all of the Project Lead the Way courses that are offered at Memorial. And probably will talk most about Principles of Engineering, and he's taught that for nearly 20 years before Project Lead the Way was even a thing. So he's, he's definitely our resident expert. So just to go ahead and review a little bit what has happened this year. Each high school has offered three courses within the Project Lead the Way engineering track at Memorial. Those courses were Introduction to Engineering Design, IED, the Principles of Engineering, POE, and Civil Engineering and Architecture, CEA. And Project Lead the Way falls right in with us in our education system with the use of acronyms. North also offered the Introduction to Engineering Design course, the Principles of Engineering, and this year, Digital Electronics. So just differing with that one course, primarily based on student interest and teachers that were trained and capacity for staff and that sort of thing. Those of us at the district, Dr. Hardabek and the two principals and I met last fall with our Manufacturing Education Roundtable. That's a small group of some manufacturing and some, and STEM-related employers. That's an offshoot of the Chamber of Commerce's Business and Workforce Development Committee. Couple of the businesses represented on that roundtable also serve on our Project Lead the Way partnership team or advisory committee. And then in addition to those couple manufacturers, we have other business and industry folks, engineering-related, as well as post-secondary folks on that partnership team. We've really worked a lot this year of, with the formation of an interdepartmental and really interdist, interdistrict STEM team. And really Project Lead the Way is our curriculum that we use for those engineering and STEM-related courses. We felt that it was important as we move forward, which is the next slide, to really have that interdistrict and interdisciplinary team and a true STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. You know, right now, you know, if, if you are thinking of engineering, you know, the, the only place that, that that happens is, is with tech ed. You know, the Principles of Engineering, the Introduction to Engineering Design. Certainly, we know our science and math teachers are preparing students for those types of careers, but really looking at a team approach. So we are moving forward with offering four courses at each high school. So the four I mentioned before, where the, the digital electronics and civil engineering and architecture were one in each school, those will be in both buildings next year. And then we have formed this team of science, math, and technology education instructors to work together, and we hope for that team to work with that partnership team, get out and see the business and industry, what their needs are, what they're desiring, our students, the post-secondary people to come and say, here's what we're looking for when your students come to us to pursue careers and, and, you know, education in this area. Really just, it's instructional planning time for this to truly be a team effort, if you will. This will also, we're hoping, increase enrollment in these Project Lead the Way courses and just the visibility of the course, the viability of the courses, as far as, you know, I don't even want to say this, because I'll have a colleague that sees this and says, Kristin, how could you say this? But we were, you were talking about perception earlier. Perception, perhaps that this is a tech ed class and might not prepare a student for a career in engineering, when in fact, the absolute entire opposite is very, very, very true of these courses. I think you've heard Mr. Volk say it a couple of times, you know, former students that I've talked to and we've worked with that have taken these courses, you know, that, these are almost AP level or if not AP level courses. They have an end of course assessment. There's, they are right up there, you know, it's physics on steroids is the Principles of Engineering of what we hear from the students who have taken, taken both. So it's definitely, you know, high- So, it's definitely, you know, high quality instruction happening in these Project Lead the Way courses. So, one of the things we are looking at is aligning with the increase in science and math graduation requirements to have the opportunity for students to earn the science and math credit for high school graduation, but also it is recognized by all UW system schools that these courses, if approved to be science and math equivalent, are recognized by these schools as science and math credit for admissions. Really, there is a couple of ways to do this. Well, first, we are seeking science credit for The Principles of Engineering course. And then there's a lot of math content actually in our Digital Electronics course. And actually, this year already, we do have a math teacher trained and is teaching that digital electronics for us over at North High School. So, what we're hoping is by doing this, we'll just expand opportunities for students to earn these credits in a way that aligns with their career goals and programs of study. There is two ways to offer science or math credit, whichever the case may be, for these courses. One way is to have a math or science certified teacher teaching the course. So, I mentioned, we have a math teacher at North right now with digital electronics. We are planning this summer to send a math teacher from Memorial, also to be trained through the Project Lead the Way curriculum, to teach the digital electronics course at Memorial through the math department. The other thing you can do is go through a process with DPI with, to earn our approved math or science equivalency credit for these courses. And as we've done our work with trying to put together the interdisciplinary, interdepartmental team, we came up with the solution of, yes, let's do both. We actually think that both options are really viable for our district, especially in the looking at The Principles of Engineering course and the science equivalency credit. So, this summer, we have planned to send a science teacher, physics teacher from North to the Project Lead the Way training for The Principles of Engineering course. And we are asking to seek science equivalency credit for a technology and engineering teacher, specifically the one standing next to me, well, one over from me, to actually offer the student's science credit through his class, you know, him teaching The Principles of Engineering class. I already mentioned the math teacher. Oh, and then they say we're saying the math, a math teacher also from Memorial. Did I say that already? I got ahead of myself. So, there is a, as with anything with DPI, of course, a process to the science equivalency. The first was certainly having our team get together, having that partnership team support and, you know, approve, maybe approve isn't the right word, support us in that endeavor. And also certainly to have the team of administrators and teachers be all in support of that. The next step in the process was to actually have that science teacher and the technology and engineering teacher go ahead with the principals and I and look at those standards, both the technology education standards and the science standards specifically for Principles of Engineering. And that was done, and I'm going to let Scott actually tell you about that. But as he's walking over here, I need to tell you that these two instructors, while they come from different backgrounds, different disciplines, they were like two peas in a pod, and they are just going to be a fabulous team of partnership to work with, with This Principles of Engineering course as we move forward. And Scott Erickson.
Okay, like Kristin said, my name is Scott Erickson, and currently teach Technology and Engineering at Memorial High School. And it dawned on me when I was sitting out there, and Mr. Laban probably remembers this, that the last time I spoke to the board was 18 years ago, when we piloted the program Principles of Engineering at the two high schools. And since then, is when Principal Engineering was then later adopted by the Project Lead the Way group out of New York State. And it was actually, Oakdale School District was the first district in the state of Wisconsin to teach those courses. But now, in the last few years, we've been nationally certified and DPI has allowed the process of science equivalency while a technology and engineering teacher teaches it. So, that's kind of why I'm here. But what we did do, meeting with Jesse Weinberger, was part of the process is although this crosswalk has already been approved by DPI, one of the steps that they want to do is just look and see if there's any differences at the local level that there may be, and look to see that those things are identified and whatnot. But quite honestly, as far as the curriculum that comes from Project Lead the Way, I teach that pretty much verbatim. I mean, it's really about 250 days worth of curriculum that you have to do in about 190 days. And so, when we sat down, when I sat, when we all sat down with Jesse, it was really refreshing to see a physics teacher look at the curriculum. And what we did is we went unit by unit, lesson by lesson, and she just kept saying, that's all science, that's all science, that's all science. And so, that was, it was nice to have Jesse there kind of go through that and reaffirm what I think we already knew, because DPI has already, had done this process a number of years ago. And in the end, basically, out of 180 days of instruction, we kind of identified about 10 to 12 days that wasn't pure, pure science. And that's coming from Jesse Weinberger from North High School. And even with that stuff, she says, well, it's kind of like science, it's science-related, but it's not really pure science. And we're talking about things such as, there's a number of days that do career research type of stuff into engineering. There was about, there's about a week unit in statistical analysis that's more math than it is probably pure science. So, out of that 10 to 12 days that we kind of took out of that it wasn't pure science, it's pretty much science-related. So, that was one of the steps that we did, and we did that maybe three weeks ago, two weeks ago. And we just, that's just part of the process that we went through, is so that we can look at it and identify what the curriculum really is. And then just last Friday, Jesse Weinberger came over and visited my classroom for the morning, had the opportunity to come over. So, she's trying to get a jump start on her training this summer and getting ready to go for next year. So, I mean, I can certainly ask, answer any questions about the curriculum, any of this other stuff I'm not so interested in, but the stuff that happens in the classroom, I'm certainly interested in. So, if you have any questions, just let me know.
So, is that it? Is there more to say? And then we can do questions. If you guys just have a little bit left, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, there's one, one left, Dave, one left. So, really, that was the nuts and bolts, you know, the good share of the work mostly was getting those teachers together and going through that crosswalk. Now, really, we're at the point in the DPI process, if we're following step by step, to ask you if you agree with offering the science equivalency credit for The Principles of Engineering course when it's taught by a technology and engineering teacher. Dates in there, obviously, tonight's your presentation, and then I was happy to hear you're still going to meet on June 1st, so that we can get this off to DPI, hopefully. We do submit all documentation to DPI, so while Mr. Laban's busy with his open enrollment letters on June 2nd, I'll be busy compiling that to go to DPI, hopefully. And then we'll know within 60 days. By then, like Mr. Erickson alluded to, DPI has already approved this. They approved it back in '08, and have, we've, have reaffirmed the process and the whole idea of having the equivalency credits with us, just to double check since it's been a little while, but it's still just as true today as it was then. And then we move forward next year with this, with this STEM team and in place, and hopefully bigger and better things to come.
Great, thank you. I was just, just so the board knows, you know, we don't normally approve like individual courses, but I was conferring with superintendent and DPI requires it for this kind of program, which is why it's before us. So, that's why it would be before us next time as a resolution. So, with that, any questions for those folks? Yes, Commissioner Voo.
Just for clarification, will this credits and course be aligned with college track?
Yep, I actually have documentation from the UW system. They, like we said, it's like Physics on Steroids kind of. They certainly recognize the credit, the science credit for that course as a science credit for admissions, just like with any course that they take. Every institution is going to see it a little bit different, you know, even with the AP classes, some institutions will take it, some won't, some require one score, some require a different score, that sort of thing. But as a whole, if we say it's science credit, the universities say it's science credit.
Thank you.
Commissioner McBoyle.
I just have to laugh when you were doing the crosswalk in what is pure science, because in education, nothing's really pure anymore. So, when you take STEM, you know, you're interrelating all those things. So, I appreciate your hard work.
Yeah, I have a question. Have you had a chance to partner with business, any on this? Because I could see some opportunities to do that. Either, any of you, it would be nice to know if that's happened at all.
Yep, certainly, you know, we have multiple businesses as part of our partnership team. And then through the youth apprenticeship program, a couple of those businesses do employ our students. And certainly, we're only looking to grow those programs and, you know, maybe students in these type of courses, as we look at our scope and sequence for, you know, grades eight through 12, all the way around, we can, you know, have some opportunities in there for more business and industry interaction, both for our kids, but also for our teachers.
Yeah, both training, internships, even financial help with equipment. I mean, I can think of some great equipment you might need. I was an engineer, electrical engineer, so I'm really excited about this. But I could see all those opportunities, and oftentimes I'm looking at you, because the teachers often are the ones that, oh yeah, I could really work with someone to do this, help me out, so.
Yep, absolutely. And most of the people on our partnership team have been very, you know, forthcoming and with those opportunities, happy to have the educators out at their place of business, happy to come in and talk to the students. You know, we haven't got real deep into it, but we've talked about equipment, you know, if they have a piece of equipment that's not useful for their business anymore, but it's probably newer than anything we've got, so we'll take it. And, you know, all of those things are brainstormed and definitely will be looked at as we move forward.
Yeah, great, great. Board members, any other comments or discussion on this, questions? Okay, thank you. I think it's really exciting. Thank you for all the work. I assume from the board, we'll bring it before resolution next time, so. Yeah, thank you very much. Wonderful.
Thanks.
Okay, now, next on our agenda for committee is referendum discussion. Start discussing that a little more detail here tonight. Exciting to talk about, yes. So, in the report, we'll get an update on our financial status, our operational capital needs. We'll review the three kinds of referendums and the other initiatives across the state regarding referendums. And then we can have a discussion about it.
All set?
All set, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, let's look at financial status, and let's look at probably most of which is not going to be changing. I'm going to take you back to a most recent budget planning report. What's not going to change is the makeup of revenue. 93% of it is still going to be controlled by the state at the end of this budget session, and probably for the foreseeable future. Obviously, major implications with that, which we've talked about time and time again in the past. What's probably not going to change is the size of the revenue limit box. We, I think there was some hope built up in the recent past that maybe some of the legislators would find a means of increasing the allowable revenue that the district has to work with. It's not looking real good as we speak, and we'll know probably by the end of the week whether anything is going to happen on that front or not. So, this slide is kind of moot. The governor's proposing a zero revenue limit increase, a zero general aid increase, and eliminating the $150 per pupil categorical aid. That's probably going to move forward. Doesn't look real bright as we speak tonight. We talked about school funding in name only. The most recent talk was perhaps some of this school levy credit could be worked around into restoring that $127 million worth of aid cut, and perhaps some of that could be worked around into increasing the revenue limit. Does not look likely as we stand here tonight. Time will tell. At the local level, we're still, we have no reason to project anything other than flat enrollment growth. We know we're going to have to bring back $1.7 million worth of Fund 80 this year, which will then carry forward into next year. And we know that expenditure growth then is a main factor in what you're going to be looking at in terms of referendum possibilities. If we go back, show you just the two, just review real quickly, the two extremes on the spectrum, you wouldn't think that a normal, a low normal annual operation in terms of parameters would be an extreme of a spectrum, but it's shaping up to be that way. We know next year, 1.62% is the allowable increase in base wage. So, if we put that in place for 15, 16, for the next three years after that, just did the average annual base wage increase since its inception, we know pretty much what adjustments to fringes are going to be. And if we put a low-end, non-salary growth factor in for each year, here's what it winds up being. Because of the factors previously mentioned, next year, we're looking at an $8.2 million incursion into working capital to solve the expenditure exceeding revenue problem, followed by three years that totaled $36.8 million worth of revenue exceeding, expenditures exceeding revenue. On the opposite end, assume absolutely no growth in anything over the next four years. We still have a $6.5 million issue next year with working capital, 16, 17. You're still looking, you're pushing $20 million over three years. And as we have said on many occasions and will continue to say, this is a revenue problem, it is not an expenditure problem. Because what is not going to change in this district is the low administrative cost per student compared to the other major school districts in the state. We're the largest, eighth largest district in the state. We compare with the districts listed below. We're not going to dramatically increase the direct instruction cost per student, and we're not going to increase the total instruction cost per student. Just going to page through the working capital, fund balance, to get to a final number here to keep in mind. As of last June 30th, we had $28.6 million in fund balance. Most of that was in working capital. So, that's kind of the update on the financial status, not a lot different than what we had talked about the last time we talked about it. So, with that in place then, I'd like to move to something other than this. What I want to talk about, first of all, let me back up. As Mike mentioned, the Demo Trends Committee had looked at some preliminary information relative to a capital needs referendum, about 46 million. That's still being processed. Charlie is working with architects to refine those numbers. We want to take that to, that information to the Budget Development Committee for further discussion before we bring it to the board. One of the things we're going to want to be talking about is how to deal with the Roosevelt needs, and then look at other needs on the list. So, I'm not going to spend any time on that tonight. I would expect that at the end of the day, that number could very well approximate what we were out for last time in 2011, I guess it was, around 50, 50 million, give or take. What I do want to focus on tonight is the other two, other type of referendum, and that would be the referendum to exceed revenue limits. And I'd like to show you is how that works and what the, what the implications are for tax rate. tax rate, at least based on some assumptions that we'd be working with here. So let me get this squared away because you need to see cause and effect here. Okay, that's kind of hard to read. Okay. That's where I want to be. Okay. The option that we just looked at, the three years, at the one end of the spectrum, called for a $36.8 million, three-year problem with expenditures exceeding revenues by these amounts each year. You have two ways of attacking that in terms of an override of revenue limits. You can either go out on a recurring basis or a non-recurring basis. Doesn't make any difference which one of those you pick. They're both, they both need to solve a $36.8 million problem. It's just that the approach in each one is a little different. So 15, 16 will be whatever 15, 16 will be. It's too late to have a referendum to deal with that. We can deal with that through budget, through our budget work as we refine the budget for next year, certainly wanting to get this number lower than what it is. But really, the referendum has got three years' worth of, of need here, assuming an April of 2016 referendum. So if you attack it from a recurring basis, all right, what does that mean? That means that you ask the taxpayers for a certain amount of dollars the first year. In this case, you'd be asking for 9 million, oh, don't want it there. Be up here. You'd be asking for 9 million, 242, 494 for that first year, okay? And you can see what happens down here the second year. Oh, that amount is reduced. Well, why is it reduced? It's because this 9 million continues forward in the next year. That's the definition of recurring is. Once you get it approved, it stays with you for the future. So the next year, you'd be asking for 3 million, 765, okay? That stays with you. So the next year, you go out for a referendum, your request is for 3 million, 168, 505. And boom, you've got it. All right? So that's how a recurring referendum works. You build in, into your base each year, the amount of need. Okay, so what about non-recurring? What does that mean? Well, non-recurring is the opposite of recurring. Non-recurring is you go out each year for the dollar amount you need. All right? Now, keep in mind that last year was what, about $3 million, if you recall? Just, just keep that dollar amount in mind because you need to consider that when you're considering the type of referendum. So on a non-recurring, you go out for the first year of 92, 42, 494, solves your problem. Next year, you're going to need 12, 243, 206, solves your problem. The next year, you need 15, 411, 684, solves your problem. All right? Again, recurring builds it in. Non-recurring, you put it in, you back it out. You put it in, you back it out. Put it in, you back it out. The thing you have to be careful about, and this, this is what you need to consider carefully as you contemplate what approach you want to take, is if you're putting the money into funding your ongoing operations, increasing your costs as you go year by year by year, what do you do here? If you go non-recurring and you have built up a dependency on this type of volume in a non-recurring basis, and you cannot get a succeeding referendum to pass, you have a $15.4 million problem on your hand because nothing has been built in. It's just been year by year by year. If you go with the recurring, you're building in capacity year by year by year. So that third year, if you don't get a continuing referendum, you don't have as much of a, of a cliff. All right? Either way you go on this, your tax rate projections are identical because you're going to wind up with the same levy, whether it's recurring or non-recurring. Just put this together, just to illustrate what a possible tax rate situation could be. This is option three. We're talking about property value, equalized property value of $100,000. And we're talking about an annual equalized property value growth of 1.5%. All right, so with a recurring referendum, we've got really three things going out there in terms of levy. We've got our general fund levy. We've got our debt service fund levy. We've got our community service fund levy. All right? This is 1415. This is the year that we're in right now. This is final. So if we take the levy and divide it by the property value, we can come up with the tax rate, which is expressed in terms of dollars per thousand. So the general fund this year is costing us $8.54 per thousand. The debt service fund is 91 cents per thousand. And the community service fund is 41 cents per thousand. So you add that up, and your total tax rate then is $9.86. Or on a $100,000 house, taxes would be $986. Well, if you look at 1516 next year, that tax rate, assuming a 1.5% growth in your property value, would calculate out to $9.11. Actually, the debt service fund falls off a little bit. And the community service fund really falls off because of the rule change and those dollars that you're bringing back into Fund 10. So you're not going to levy for those out here in the community service fund. What you are going to do though, you're going to pay for those things out of your working capital, you know, in, because now they're coming under revenue limits. And so that's how that works. So if this comes into play next year, the total tax rate would be up by $41, $45 per thousand dollars of property value. So if you have property valued at 300,000, let's say, your tax increase on average on an equalized property value basis would be up 100, what, $35. Followed by the next year of 112, then by 44, and then by 32. Now, you really need to, at some point in time, this is going to have to be finalized. All right, you're going to have to put some projections out there that, that are going to be the best possible projection or estimate on what's going to happen. But if you stop and think, we're talking today about a biennial budget that is, who knows what it's going to be, 1516, Your referendum to exceed revenue limits is going to go out beyond that to the next biennial budget. If you think there's uncertainty, you know, with this biennial budget, as close as we are to it, 1718 and 1819, I mean, look at the volatility that exists in K-12 Education Day relative to state funding. How in the world do you project yet, you know, four years out or three years out? It's going to be very difficult. So what you're going to need to do is whatever the set of parameters are in place, when you go to the electorate and say, this is what we need for, through 1819, you're going to have to be very, very careful that you monitor what happens along the way so that you can always go back and say, well, this is what we thought was going to happen. This is why we said we needed it. But this is what really happened. Maybe even, that could be plus, it could be minus. So that as you go through these years, you're not going to build doubt, you're not going to build distrust with your electorate. It's going to be very important to monitor that and on an annual basis, explain exactly what you were thought you were going to see versus what you did see. But this is what it could look like. It's, it's going to be something similar to this. We will know 1516 by September, October. You're going to pass a budget. So that one will be very firm. It's just that what happens beyond that, you're going to have to make some educated estimates. So.
Dan, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When you were doing the recurring, non-recurring projections there before, were you saying that you would do three referendums, one each?
No, that would be one question. You would go out to the electorate and, and let's say that you would, you wanted to, let's say that you were looking at a, at a recurring.
Uh huh.
The first, you would ask the electorate for permission to exceed revenue limits by 9 million the first year, 3 million the second year.
All right.
3 million the third year.
All at once.
One question.
Right. And one question, if it was non-recurring, the same amount each year, but it would not be, it would just be.
8 million, about 15 million.
Right. Just wanted to make that clear.
Right.
Okay.
It would be for, yeah, this is all set up to look at three years.
But the recurring would continue past those, right?
Oh, yeah.
Because it was recurring.
Once, if you go recurring, and that is, that is built in to your base.
Yeah.
Which is a, kind of a strong argument on the need for continuing resources. The revenue picture at the state level, my opinion, is not going to look bright for a while. You know, in fact, I don't know when it's going to look bright. So if you, if you take that, apply it against where we are in cost per student, you know, as low as we are, this district is at a point in time where you're going to need successive referendums in order to operate.
One other question, back to, so where are you finishing up last time is, you know, we'll know a biennial budget, you know, by end of this summer. So we'll have some certainty by fall of the next year, right?
16, yeah, 1617, yes.
1617. We'll have some reasonable projection for that.
Right.
Okay.
So with that, I did have a chance to look at a little bit of other data. We had gone back, when, when the Demo Trends Committee was looking at, at this information, I put together a history. DPI is a very nice feature in your website. This is one of the areas that you can really dig, drill down on, go back historically and get some nice data. So I said, well, let's go back to when revenue limits first came into play. And let's see how referendums to issue debt, bricks and mortar, how did that fare 93, 94 to beginning of this year? And, you know, there are a number of referendums over time to issue debt. In the early years, a lot of districts went out for that. And not so much in more recent years, a more stable amount. But the interesting thing here is that in Eau Claire, during that period of time, the district did hold referendums to issue long-term debt. In 1997, 98, the district asked for 38.7 million. It failed. It was to provide for two elementary schools, improvements in two high schools, to buy some land, and to do a technology piece. Looks like it came right back around in a slightly pared down, modified referendum, 317, which passed. That included Flynn. It included some work to add to and remodel elementary schools and work on the two high schools. Also passed was a 2500, a $2.5 million question to replace roofs and floors and remove asbestos. Don't know why that was considered as a separate question, but some of you who were here then know that answer. In 2010, 2011, we went out, 51850, that was the, the one for our three elementary schools in Delon. At the same time, we also asked that 3.9 million question for Prairie Ridge, which failed, but which we, the district was able to pursue later on at a much lower cost. And made a, made a very nice acquisition there a couple of years ago. But here's the history on pass fail. The green is pass, the red is fail. You can see, you know, over time, there's a lot more passes than there are fails. And, but it's not a slam dunk by any stretch of the imagination. You know, these referendums can fail if they're not adequately explained and, and presented. So then we get to the recurring referendums. And again, there's a history of that going out. But you can see that in more recent years, the number of recurring questions and the number of districts going out for them isn't as great as it was in the 90s to the mid to late 2000s. This district has never had a referendum to, on a recurring basis. But you can see that in terms of pass rate, eh, there are some years where pass rate's not real good. 2009, 10 would be a good example. Non-recurring is, is far more popular. And this district did go out for two non-recurring referendums. One was in 98, 99. And I came into the tail end of that. That was for technology acquisition. Yeah.
All right. Can she do that?
Well, why do you think that is that recurring doesn't have such a good record?
I haven't seen any studies on that, any exit interviews or anything like that. I would have to assume that perhaps the electorate is more comfortable with, this is what you need this year, I'll give it to you. This is what you say you need this year, we'll give it to you. You know, more compartmentalized approach than, well, and once I give it to you, you've got it, you know?
Well, I was just wondering if people understand that recurring would be the same cost as one-time deal.
That's one of the things that you, yeah, that's one of the things you really have to drill, drill home when you're out explaining these referendums to the, to the public at large, that they understand it fully, right?
Well, it's not quite same cost because after, say, the non-recurring ends, the cost ends for the property taxpayer. But recurring, it continues.
Yeah.
Right? In the future, after the three years.
That's correct.
I mean, that, that tax continues.
No one goes on.
No, if it's recurring, it's indefinite.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah. Right. That's, so does a, will a property taxpayer commit to that?
No wonder.
Right, right.
That, I would think that would be the common, common sense explanation, logical explanation. In 06, 07, that was the year we were looking for, you know, again, a significant impact on revenue limits. And it was either this or cut 7.5 million out of the 2007, 2008 budget. And the referendum failed. And the board had some very difficult decisions to make that year.
Dan, I, Rich, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, me and my questions. Has, has a recurring, reoccurring referendum ever been tied to a percentage increase? Like, we're tied to the CPI?
I'm not aware of that. It might have been, you know, a point of discussion. But as I've looked at, there's, there's a brief synopsis of what the referendums are for. And as I researched the data and put it together, I didn't see anything like that. It was all recurring, non-recurring for ongoing operational needs, you know? Or maybe they'll be a little more specific, but not tied to percent on CPI.
I wonder if statutory, you can even phrase it that way. Not that I'm asking you to answer that.
Yeah, I think, I don't think there's any prohibition against phrasing it that way. I think the problem might be in articulating what that percentage is there for. You're ultimately going You're ultimately going to have to explain what it is you need to, you're wanting to accomplish with those additional tax dollars, which gets us to program drives budget. Program needs have to drive this discussion. Tax rate, if you go out and try to sell it on the basis of reasonable tax rate increases and that type of thing, I don't think you have a chance to be as successful as if you say, we need these dollars so that we can continue or we can maintain X, Y, or Z. Yeah. So anyway, that failed. And here's the history on non-recurring. You can see a lot more green than red. There's a more successful rate there. Then one other thing I did is, that's history, so I said, well, what about the last five years? What does it look like? And so if we go from 2010, July 1 of 2010, 11, to today, to issue debt, 220 questions on ballots during that five-year period, 58.6 passed, 41.4% failed. Yeah, you know, that's almost 50/50. Again, no assurance that they're going to pass automatically. In fact, if we look at this year to date, there were 68 of those 220 questions, a little higher pass/fail rate this year, for whatever that means. I don't know how much you can draw from it, but that's what the data shows.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Lukenbill. By law, are school districts required to put referendums on the Wisconsin, on the state's spring election ballot, or could we put it on November ballot?
You can put it wherever you want it. You can hold special elections. There's no, there's no set date. There are some, you know, there are some strategy points to consider. You know, when, when do voters most likely turn out? Probably for a general election, you know? Whenever you hold a special election, you're always suspect of, what are you trying to pull? You know, you're trying to sneak one through, you know, that type of thing.
And we have to pay for it.
And we have to pay for it, yeah, which could be about 30, 40,000 dollars, you know, which is not good. So that's issue debt. Recurring referendum to exceed revenue limits, recurring, all right? Again, during this five years, 36, almost the same number pass/fail as the upper, as the issue debt referendums during this period of time. Slightly lower percentage pass/fail so far this year. And then non-recurring, 196, 69.4% pass rate, 78.5 this year. So over three-fourths of the ones that folks went out to this year passed. So I don't know, again, what you can read into that, but perhaps, perhaps voters are getting used to the idea that school districts are strapped for revenue, 90, and we're not that much different. 93% of our revenue is controlled by the state, that's about, you're going to find that in about every other school district in the state, too. I think that covered the points that you wanted me to review for you tonight, so I'll turn it back over to our board president.
Sorry, I was talking, but, so, so you, so what we want to do now is we want to get input on a number of questions, get input from you on a number of questions regarding referendum. The ones I have here is, first of all, we even have to talk, construction or operational referendum. Okay, what do you think is more important? Another is the type of operational, if you want to do that. Any thoughts about a balance of referendum, timing of referendum that Commissioner Lukenbill brought up? So those are some of the questions I have in mind. And I think ultimately what we'll want to do is give this input to the Budget Committee and come back with some recommendations for us, something more specific that we can work with. And we have to think about timing, I was just talking about superintendent about that, so that we have plenty of time to discuss the referendum with the community and so forth. So that's where we're at with those questions. So I don't know if you want to just talk on my first on the list or something else, but first on my list was construction versus operation. We have needs in both areas, so. And any questions for Dan, of course, obviously, if you have some. Commissioner McBoyle.
If, I mean, I really think we need an operational referendum. I don't want to discount our physical plant needs either, though. If you go for an operational referendum, what, what does that include?
The operational referendum would be to exceed revenue limits.
And that's, so that could be, go out for an operational referendum, could cover anything that would cover our needs?
Could.
Okay.
And I assume your point is, is that we don't specify in the referendum what it is, but we need to obviously sell it to the public within how we would use it.
Sure.
Correct?
Right. You could go out, for example, you go out for an operational referendum to increase the amount of money that Buildings and Grounds has in their budget to do repairs to district, you know, to schools on an annual basis, that 1.6 million that you've been able to fund over time, that you really need about twice as much, you could, you could do that, you know, just like you could use that to, you know, fund STEM programs.
Well, I'll just say that when we worked on the last referendum, it was all for capital needs, and the public understood it quite well, I think, and we had DVDs and pictures of what the needs were in the buildings, and people realized they had to help out. If it's too vague, I don't think that's good. You're like, well, it's for whatever we need. I don't think that'll sell, and people more easily understand the bricks and mortar referendums. So I'd be hesitant to just make it totally operational for that reason.
So just to kind of, if we, if you had, wanted to incorporate both, it would be two referendums on the ballot, just so you understand that.
So I know that.
Yeah. Commissioner Zhang.
Okay. I am most interested in reoccurring referendums, but is, say, we need 10,000, could we ask for five versus 10? Because that would be more or less, more attractive to the voters. Could we do that?
The answer is yes, but if you need 10 and you only ask for five, you've got a $5 million problem on your hand that you need to deal with.
Yes. My thinking is because non-reoccurring has a better chance of passing, according to these numbers anyhow. But reoccurring is going to solve a lot of our future problems if we can get it. And I'm thinking if we, if the number is lower, there's a better chance. That's why I came up with that, but, yes, it would be nice if we need 10, we can get 10 for this year, next year, and so on, until, until everything fixes itself. And when it does fix itself, how do we get rid of that 10?
You don't. On a recurring basis, it stays in there, stays in place, but again, it's there to solve problems. And you're not going to have an end to problems at the end of three years. You're going to be right back out, asking for another referendum for a period of time, and then I believe you're going to be out asking for another referendum for a period of time. Until things change at the state level, where revenue starts flowing like it did five or six years ago, this district, as well as many other districts in the state, are going to be faced with the referendum as the tool to provide the funding that you need to do what's happening out there every day in the classroom. It's at that point.
And I understand that, and I think a lot of the members that are sitting here understands that. Now I guess it is time to strategize, a way to communicate to the public, so then they will understand our need.
Commissioner Vu? You just, you let her turn up.
Thank you. I'm curious, what is your level of confident if we were to, I mean, level of confidence in terms of adequately explaining the package, the referendum package, and the way we present the package to the public? If we were to move on with the recurring and the exceed revenue limit?
I'm confident that a very strong case can be made and presented very well to the taxpayers in terms of need. Again, program drives budget. So, I mean, pick your content area, you know, if you want to start, A, art, okay? What does art offer in terms of student learning? Just walk around the hallways here in this building and look at some of the creative pieces that young children produce, you know, that you've put a frame around it. Boy, I'd be happy to hang that on any wall in my house, you know? And beyond that, you know, what does, what does that do for a student's, you know, creativity as they move through lecture? You just take a content area by content area by content area, and you explain what it is that's being done now, and what it might look like if the dollars aren't there to do that. That's about all you can do. Make your case and then trust that the community supports K-12 public education enough to make the, you know, the vote positive.
Just a second, just, did you have a follow-up? Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead. Follow-up question. Can we risk the chance of the following year, we attempt again, if the first attempt does not carry out? And then we should, the, start the referendum again the following year? What kind of risks are we facing?
Well, there's, I mean, if you look at the pass/fail rates for either non-recurring or recurring, you can see that, you know, there's, there's a likelihood, well, not a likelihood, there's possibility that any referendum can fail. Certainly, you need to, if that happens, regroup quickly, possibly look at making revisions where you can, but if the need is there, and you're out there with an honest explanation of what it is, to come back around with half as much of a request, well, either the need wasn't there, or your decision to reduce that in half is going to be countered with using your working capital up or making some pretty draconian cuts and reductions to what you're currently doing. Again, the district is at a point, in my opinion, where it can advance a very strong argument on what is needed to maintain what is currently being done.
These are great questions. I want to point out, part of the discussion tonight is to ask questions about what do we need to know to make our decisions, so. Commissioner McBoyle.
So, Dan, if, if we wanted to also educate our community relative to state funding for public schools, which is all part of this conversation, could we pose a referendum that would possibly be linked to state funding? Meaning if, say, for example, we said referendum not to exceed the CPI plus maybe a certain percentage linked to state funding, and if the state would increase their funding, then we could reduce a levy. So they've got skin in the game. It's part of who we are as a community to fund our schools, but if the funding's there, then we acknowledge that. And that makes for a rich conversation about how we fund our schools.
You could, that's something, I think, that takes a little more thought. I would not want to give a off-the-cuff answer to that right now, because again, you're going to be asking the electorate for, to base a decision on numbers rather than program.
Well, I tie that to the fact that we are so, I mean, we've made every cut we possibly could make. I mean, I think it's a given that if we don't pass a referendum, we're going to be looking at programs, right? And we're going to be looking at more skin in the game as closer to kids. Remember, we've tried to stay as far away from our kids as possible. I don't know, just a thought.
I'd like to go back to one thing you mentioned when Commissioner Vu asked the question. You said, or if it doesn't pass, what, what will go away, right? Like what programs? And, you know, that can be considered a threat in some ways, but it's also reality, right? And what I would be interested in knowing is, at least in general, what would go away if we didn't have this? That would be useful for me. And I look at what we've lost in the past and what we've done. We've increased athletic fees, you know, we've reduced music staff, for example, some of the schools, so they're not served quite as well. We've had to underserve our maintenance needs. I could keep going on with the list. I'd be interested in knowing, okay, now we have reduced state funding in the future, what else is going to be gone? And I'm not asking you to answer that now, but to me, that would be really useful to know, and that helps me argue better with the public why we need to do this, so. Commissioner Zhang.
I guess I just want to make one more comment. The graphs that were shown earlier clearly shows that we are not outspending our competitors or other places that are comparable to us. So this is clearly not because we are going out there and spending way more than we need to. We're a very lean district, and we are proud of that, but it's becoming, it's becoming dangerously close to where we can't operate at our just normal capacity. It's, it's hurting, and it's not because we are overspending. Just want to make that point clear.
I guess one thing that would be helpful for me in looking at all of the different options is maybe utilizing what the board did back with the last referendum, referendum, I should say, which was the property tax calculator, and I believe that was on the old k12.wi website. But even having that initially as a tool that the board can use and see and look at actively in these discussions, and then if we were, well, when we are to move forward and whatever that future looks like, if we can make that an interactive thing for the community again, I think that would be huge and a great, easy way to engage folks.
Commissioner Vu.
Before we get to that point, I believe the board needs to give direction to the Budget Committee in terms of what type of referendum we are talking about. And I'm ready to move that we go with recurrent, and we also move on with the exceed revenue limit option.
So you're making, you want to make a motion?
Not today, but I'm ready that we can vote next time.
I see. So, so, in other words, right now, you're in favor of our operation, recurring operational referendum.
And recurrent.
Yep.
But as soon as we can, we need to let the Budget Committee know so they can work on the details.
Agreed, agreed. We are on a timeline we have to work on for this. Other thoughts on that, on having a recurring, recommending the budget look at a recurring operational referendum? I, I, well, since no one else is, I'll say something. Construction referendum, you know, we have a lot on there, and I agree with Commissioner Dux, and that probably is easier to sell, because it's clear to everyone. It's not as hard to sell. But, you know, we've been putting off these programmatic needs for years, and we just keep slicing away at things. So I, I think I would, you know, at one time, I was more in favor of construction referendum, but the more I look at the state budget, the more I see. construction referendum, but the more I look at the state budget, the more I see what's happening with our programs. I, I think I'm probably in favor of what Commissioner Vu said. I haven't decided on recurring versus non-recurring, but certainly operational referendum. Other, Commissioner Dux?
Well, I think we have to be as specific as possible if we, especially if we do that operational, because I wouldn't want anybody to get the idea that we're, I mean, we haven't talked about salaries, but, you know, we're studying them now, and, and people know that, I think. So, if we need that, then I need to hear that, too. But, of course, we need it. But programs would be ahead of salaries in my mind, but if the Budget Committee needs more instruction than that, I don't know. But I, I agree with the recurring referendum. I, I mean, it's not gonna get better, like Mr. Van De Water said.
Commissioner Camp, him McBoyle?
I'm in, I'm leaning towards the recurring operational referendum as well. I think people are more aware of the state budget and where public schools sit in our state right now. And certainly, we can do more on that education piece, but the awareness level is higher than it was. And I think when you look at previous districts that have gone for recurring, you're seeing more of them.
Commissioner Zhang?
I guess I am in favor of reoccurring as well. I was re-motivated before we started the conversation, actually, when we had the public forum this evening. The, James made a very good point about the, the students that this is going to impact.
Commissioner McBoyle?
The other comment along with you, 'cause I meant to say that, too, is, you know, I don't think people always realize that by any budget, and we, you know, we, we, we guess, you know, half the time on how we're gonna, not in great guessing, but you know what I mean? We don't have a sustained picture of what that's going to look like. And I think that people are-
You mean from the state?
Yeah. And I think that, that as a board, we, we are very concerned about the future of our school district and the kids in our district, and I think that that sends a good message that we're in it for the long haul, and we're gonna do the best we can for them.
Mr. Martin made some great points, that he mentioned, you know, how do we maintain our fund balance? How do we retain good staff? How do we keep our long-term programming, like music, like art, so forth? You know, maintenance facilities, those are all a great list of things that we need to think about.
That's kinda math class.
Commissioner Dux?
You're always talking about cutting the arts.
Yeah, well, right. I mean, exactly, exactly, so.
They're not extracurricular.
Absolutely. So, he had a great list of, of programming that's important, and, you know. So, I've heard from several board members who are interested in the Budget Committee looking at recurring, recurring referendum. So, we'd like them to look at that and come back with some kind of recommendation on that, if the board is amenable to that. I had, my other question was, you know, I worry a little bit about the property tax rate. If you look at the amount that we could be short of, I think you obviously have to balance that. I think the community will only handle, consider so much property tax rate increase, so I'm sure you will consider that when you're looking at it.
And that's one of the big variables, because what are the two, what are the two main factors in state aid, or in, in our revenue stream, state aid, general state aid and property tax? And, you know, in the next, not this biennial budget, but the one after it, what's the state gonna do with state aid? Is the, you know, state revenue picture gonna look better or look worse? You know, what are, what are elections at the state level gonna do to, you know, the balance of power there? Lot of uncertainty there. But all you can do is, is make your best projection, and then again, just track it very carefully so that people understand, you know, what you planned for versus what actually happened. Could be better, could be worse.
Right, right. And I think it's also important for the community to understand what needs we are, we are, we are trying to cover here for. One other question for the board, then, is, and Dan, you could help with this, is the, the timing question. You have that spreadsheet of timing. When do we really, should we expect something back from the Budget Committee so that the board can have enough time to make a decision and discuss this?
Well, now that we know the committee assignments, tomorrow I'll be asking my assistant to find a time that all three committee members can get together, and we need to move on this as quickly as possible. So, to answer your question, it's, it's a high priority topic for the Budget Development Committee, because they need to get back to you with recommendations, not only for the referendum, but for next year. You know, 15, 16 is the base year for the next three years. So, what are some considerations, are there considerations in next year's budget that you need to take under advisement, you know, as you set the stage for the referendum? The committee needs to talk about that also.
So, is it possible by June 1st? 'Cause that's, 'cause then after that, it's not till July 13th.
Yeah, it all depends on availability, but we sure would target that.
Okay.
Yeah.
'Cause July 13th seems late to me. Unfortunately, we don't have a second June meeting now.
We're, from, from a having data ready to go standpoint?
It's there, huh?
It's there.
Okay.
It's just a matter of getting the group together.
Okay, okay, that's good to hear. Anything else from board members on this topic? Commissioner Dux?
You're considering either November or April of next?
November would be too soon. The soonest, the soonest that you could hold it would be April 4th, 2016.
Any parting thoughts on this? This is such an important topic. I don't wanna just end until everyone feels like they've covered everything they want to on this.
Is anyone going?
Commissioner Dux?
Is anyone going to the community conversation tomorrow night?
Yes, will be there.
I'm planning to go.
Great, okay, great. Good, a great conversation. You know, it's a tough one, but I, I think it's clear we have a lot of needs financially. All right. Any public comments on this, on this committee report? Okay, great. All right. So, we'll send this to Budget Committee to look at in more detail and see what they can come back to us with. All right, finally, property insurance renewal. So, oh, Dan, so I guess you stay up here for that. Some other great budget news, right, for us?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
What, what we need from, from the board is kind of a contingency action, is how I guess I would state it. We, we checked again today. We've got a call-in for the renewal information that we need to solicit to finalize alternative bids for the local government property insurance fund, which is going out of business. If we stay with them, we're looking at an 85% premium increase, could be higher.
Do you mean this coming year?
Yeah.
Starting this fall?
15, 16, right. Now, that risk consultant that we talked about when you approved the Wermuth Consortium saw this coming, and has been putting together Plan B. We just need that renewal information so that we can get an alternative quote. We believe very strongly that we're gonna see an alternative quote that is better than what we would have continuing with the fund. The problem with the fund is, if the board intends not to do business with them as of July 1, you have to take action prior to July 1 to notify them, and it's gotta be an official board action. Now, hey, if you take the action, all of a sudden, you come in with a private sector quote of 500% increase, 85 looks pretty good. I don't think that's gonna happen. But what you're doing is just protect, you're protecting the district's ability to pull the plug with the fund by taking this action. That's, that's why you need to take the action on June 1. Is that clear?
I think so. Others? Is this clear? Do you have questions? Commissioner Zhang?
Okay, so, we notify them 60 days out saying we will not continue?
No, you just need, you need to take action on this, on this motion on June 1 to, you know, to, to stop doing business with the fund, so that it's on record. Okay? We need to come to you with an alternative quote that you can approve. We just don't have that information yet. So, what you're doing with this, with this motion right now is just protecting your interests so that you give appro, so that you have the ability to tell the fund, "We're done with you."
Okay, and we have a strong sense that the competition with the other guys will be lower?
Right.
So, so is this the insurance company, they extended for two years, that is gonna be gone?
Yes.
At the state level?
Yes.
So, we, so, we could stay with them another year?
You could stay with them for-
What would the, what would that not be good, though, right?
That would not be good.
Tell me why.
85%.
Oh, so they, they're the ones that are doing that?
Right.
Because their funds were raided? I gotcha.
Right.
Because the, the legislators messed around with the, yeah, I got it. I got.
Okay.
So, just a quick question, if, if an alternative carrier was greater than 85% after approving this next time, could we still go back to?
Absolutely.
We could.
This does not bind you in any way, shape, or form-
Okay.
-to not doing business with them. It just gives you the opportunity to say, "No, we don't wanna do business with you if you don't see anything better come along."
Okay, so there's no loss in doing that?
No, no downside on this.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Is this, does everyone understand? Okay, okay. So, I assume the, the board is okay moving this forward to a resolution next time? Okay, okay. Thank you very much, Dan, for, for all your great information. All right, is there any public comment on this topic? Another thing the state is costing us more here. Okay. Any future agenda items? Anyone have any agenda items they wanna bring up? All right, then I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Vu, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. All right, have a good night, everyone. Thank you for a long meeting before and a long meeting after the strategic plans.
This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.cbcTV.org.